The order this time, we have a quorum, seven out of seven. Shall we stand for invocation and pledge allegiance to the flag?
God, we ask for your continued blessings. We thank you for bringing us here. We ask that you deliver us home safely. We ask that thou will be done in our votes and in our discussions. And we ask that you continue to protect us, protect our state, and protect our United States of America. And we thank you for good health, and we ask that you be with those ones who are in poor health. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing to be on our agenda for the approval of our work agenda for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion that we approve, I'm sorry, I would offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt the agenda as amended. Sir.
Motion. And second, that we adopt the agenda as amended. Are you ready to vote? Seven, yes. Let's move down to the minutes.
Still move.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, that the minutes be approved. Are there any questions on it? Not all in favor? Seven, yes. Let's move down to the claims.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
And then motion and second, that the claims be approved. Are there any questions on the claims? Not all in favor? The approval of the third quarter appropriations.
Still move, Mr. Chairman, that the third quarter appropriations be approved.
Motion and second, that the third quarter appropriations be approved. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Announcements, are there announcements tonight? In the next agenda's of presentations? Do we have any? Next is the public comments. How many do we have, Ms. Lane?
We have five. Donnie Doyer, District Six, is first, and James Smith will be next.
All right.
Donald Doyer, District Six. A little later in the meeting tonight, you will vote on approval for the solar draft. This draft is a long time coming, but now that it's completed, it's much stronger than the conditions set forth in the SUPs. Could more language have been added to strengthen it more? Maybe so. But we can't, we cannot keep waiting for solar companies continuing to pour in. I encourage the board to approve the draft, and then we can no longer call it a draft, but say we have a solar policy that protects Buckingham and its residents. I want to thank the members of the committee for working on this to better protect the county. I also want to thank Mr. Chambers and the board for allowing me the opportunity to sit on the last couple of meetings. I would encourage the board to approach Riverstone, Blue Rock, and the other approved solar projects that have not had the first shovel full of dirt removed, to review this solar policy, and see if they will abide by it, or at least some of it. It could be in their best interest, especially if they need approval from other issues coming up on their projects. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Doye. Appreciate the hard work that you do. Appreciate it.
James Smith, District Four, and David Ball will be next.
Good evening. Jamie Smith, District Four, Maysville. How y'all? I'm gonna talk to y'all tonight about solar, which is not my preferred topic, because plenty of people like that topic. But I've talked to four, four folks. Three people I've talked to directly, one indirectly I heard from, about solar and farming in Buckingham County. And I found it very interesting. I covered this in my newsletter, our farm newsletter, this week. Two of the folks I talked to are against it, because they see the loss of farm and timberland in Buckingham County as a, and in America as a whole, as a precious thing. And they understand that there's gonna come a day where there's a reckoning, where we've turned so much of our fertile farmland into houses and developments and other things that won't grow anything, that it's gonna be a problem. And I understand that point of view. I also talked to two folks that I know that are not only for solar, actually putting solar or want to put solar on their property. And those folks have a different view of it. Those folks are family farmers, who are on land that not only they farm, but also their children are farming with them. And both of them are doing it because they're looking for a way to keep that land in the family, to, to keep from losing their farmland. And maybe their hope is down the road that they'll have some other better use for that when the time for solar, the use of that property is up. My point being is that, no matter which way you fall on the solar issue, not everybody who is against solar is a, I don't like green energy, hate everything, no solar at all person. Some people are against it for other reasons. And not everybody who is for solar is an absentee landowner trying to make the most profit without much consideration of their neighbors. So, and I hope that whatever comes out, we all can still be good neighbors when we're done. And if it's something you can do, maybe move up on your agenda, the solar policy, before you vote on anybody else getting solar or not getting solar in the county. I think that would put a lot of citizens at ease, knowing there's a policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Ball, District Three, and Joyce Gooden will be next.
David Ball, District Three. I wanna thank the board for this past year. I know I haven't been here much, but I'm glad that you have all been here doing your jobs. I know there are gonna be two new members to the board, starting next year, and so I wanna especially thank the two that won't be here for what they've done for the county. And to the extent of forestry, or I should say the highways, I still see a lot of trees that are on or right at the edge of the right of way, that are hazardous or dead. There have been quite a few trees that have come down over this past several months, and with the heavy rain that we got last night, I'm sure that there's plenty more that come down. So I think, you know, I know they have a lot of work to do, a lot of territory to cover, but it is important that these trees are cleared of the right of way, so that they're not a hazard to motorists. And I agree, we have a very agricultural county, and I think that's primary and important. We wanna maintain our forestry and our farming, because that's an integral part of this community. But at the same time, the world is changing, and we have to adjust and plan for those future changes. One thing that has come up, and it has been a bit of a concern, only because it was recently brought to my attention, and I know Ms. Flowers brought one of the signs in, that somebody has been putting up signs, they haven't addressed their name to it, they've been making some very litigious accusations with regards to Mr. Matthews and his association with some of the Amish. And I think that is egregious. I just, I do not accept that kind of behavior. And if somebody has an issue, they need to come forward and identify themselves, and, and talk about this in an open forum, but not backstabbing, posting signs out without identifying themselves. That's malicious and unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joyce Gooden, District Six, and Pam Morris will be next.
My name is Joyce Gooden. I reside at 1779 Shelton Store Road, Buckingham, District Six. Supervisor Joe Chambers is my supervisor. Buckingham County just finished another election cycle. Bit of my background, I've worked early polls, as well as the election day polls, so I have a bit of experience and know of what I'm, speak firsthand. On November the seventh, I was chief at the Slate River Precinct, which is Sharon Baptist Church. I saw no voter intimidation, and all eligible voters were able to vote. After all, that is the object of what we do as officers of election. I'm not here to discuss results, but to say thank you to our former director of elections and general registrar, Lindsay Taylor, and her staff for laying the groundwork for electronic, the use of the electronic poll pad and the training here in Buckingham. Thank you to Ginger Chiesa, Tony Moss, and Bob Abbott for stepping into the gap to make sense of the chaos that was created by other people. Ginger, Tony, and Bob hit the ground running and worked long hours to ensure safe, secure elections for Buckingham County. Thank you to the electoral board for stepping into your true nonpartisan role. I'm seeing baby steps, but however, I want the electoral board to walk boldly in nonpartisan leadership roles. To the board of supervisors, I ask that you ensure that the polling locations have at least good cellphone reception. Once again, three cellphones were searching for the right spot to call out to the registrar. Once we got through, we got the answers, so we need that infrastructure tightened up. My last thank you goes to the officers of election. To those who hung in there despite the negative news, rumors, and chaos, I personally say thank you. To the totally new and first-time officers of election, thank you for stepping into the unknown and unsure for the good of Buckingham County. I hope you continue to serve as officers of election. To the Slate River Precinct, Tommy Joe Stiger, Jeannie Bradshaw, Cynthia Marchetti, and Stella Tony, we worked well together. Finally, I must say publicly and for the record, how I appreciate Stella Tony and Kimberly Price-Chambers. Kimberly was falsely targeted last election, but came back this year and was flexible enough to be reassigned to another precinct on election day. She was reassigned and was an asset, and Stella was an officer, election officer newbie. She was professionally held down to positions of ballot officer and administrator. Again, thank you to all the people who worked Buckingham polls, and thank you to the board of supervisors for the support of your electoral staff.
Thank you.
Pam Morris, District Three, and that will be all.
My name is Pam Morris. I live on 420 Glen Road. Dylan, Mr. Matthews is my supervisor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's a little jumbled because of the information we got very last minute. I wanted to share my concerns with the rest of the board of supervisors about the way the finance committee addressed our request for funding. We were given an opportunity to meet this past Friday, but that meeting was canceled. I'm afraid the way it's being proposed, from what we were told at the end of today, may impact our ability to meet safety concerns from the capital improvement projects that we have. We would like to be included in meetings where questions can be answered or have an open line of communications, so that we can better serve the children in this county. Work that we have been able to accomplish this year have been completed primarily through asset grants, without the elementary, the secondary school, and with emergency funds. So we, we try to use our money very frugally, and we just want what is best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all we have signed up.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is road management, Mr. Scott Frederick.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. I'll say, Chairman, it's good to see you back.
Thank you.
We rode 602. We've had a lot of comments about it being rough, and then when the warmer weather gets here, we're gonna have a patching contractor come in and patch some of those rougher areas. And in the meantime, we're gonna keep it up a cold mix. We had an email come in about high shoulders throughout the county, and I think, Mr. Miles, you forwarded that to me from one of your constituents. And we just took care of shoulders from 15, Atsprouse's Corner, down to the Prince Edward County line, and we're gonna keep rotating that work around as we can on the rest of our primaries, but it's something that we're always being pretty mindful of. We fixed a spot right at Atsprouse's Corner where the shoulder was high. There was a puddle there last week, I saw it, but I think they fixed it on Friday. We, and there's a concrete ditch there that we touch up every year. We did that while we were out there, too. Checked, there's another ditch, I think it's in your area, Mr. Davis, that, we checked it over the weekend while it was raining, and it was pond and water there, and we, we were able to dig and get it where it was slowly draining, but we've got more work to do there.
Ed's Springs Road?
Yes, sir. So, shifting gears, we had our tree trimming contractor in working on 636. They, they completed their work. Now it looks about like 610. The right of way's cut way back and looking good. We'll be, we'll be switching over to doing ditching and shoulder and pipe repair work on that route next, getting it back up to where it's like a new road again. We've got two pipe replacements scheduled for the coming weeks, one on Cunningham Road 605, and the other's on 604 at Sycamore Creek. We got a spot where utilities have been marked, where we're gonna have a pipe jacked under 600, not too far from Back Mountain Road. We had a snow event over the weekend. We treated our low-lying areas and our bridges. We didn't actually have to push anything for this event, but it was our first event of the year. Then, other than that, we, we took down a tree that was near the mile marker post on 15, near Wise Ridge Road. I think that's in your area, Mr. Matthews. There's a tree right by the country store there on Loop Road. It's about half-dead. We looked at it about a year ago. We're working with our roadside crew. They're watching that one for us, but I asked them if they could take that down while they were here, and they said they wanted to look at it again before they made that call. I think it's right off the right of way, so they're... That's fine. Thank you. No problem. We're still working on surplus in our properties. We're gonna be doing some more work at the Andersonville lot, at the chemical storage building there, has been washed down, and they're actually gonna remove the old sediment pond that that building is connected to. So you'll see some of our equipment in there over the next coming weeks. As far as our rural rustic program, we didn't get the surfaces shot on the ones we were working on this year. We'll pick that work back up in the spring, but I thought I'd mention that the ones we're currently working on right now is Blackwell Road, 739, Wildland Road, 693, Mill Road, 620, Warren Ferry Road, 627, Firehouse Road, 740, and Old Fort Road, 766. So I think that's everything that I was able to get together for the report to you guys tonight. I can take questions, comments, or concerns from you at this time.
Okay, we'll start by District, District One?
Yes, that what I called you on, Alberta Trucks, and the Joneses, for the slate quarry, GPS coordinates.
Oh, yes, sir. I did, with, yes, I worked with our communications officer, and there's actually a website that we were able to submit that to, that gets it out to all the companies that feed GPSs, and we're actually working to get a no outlet sign placed there on 15, so people will know it's...
They took Mrs. Jones's mailbox over last week, so when I called you.
Yes, sir. I knew there was two things you called me about, and I got both of them looked at, but I forgot to let you know about that one.
I don't know why, it's been the last couple of years that GPS brings them right in there instead of going to the quarry, and that old road that used to go through to the quarry, been trees growed up in it for 40 years, so I know it ain't nobody, ain't no road gonna do that, but...
Yes, sir. Well, hopefully, the two, the two things that we were able to do, hopefully that'll keep it from happening in the future.
And if you could, most of everybody on the board knows that I totaled a truck Thanksgiving week, a tree fell on it, on my road. And that tree, there's some trees around, right on the right of way, that, that are trying to come up, coming up. I had my grandson with me. It could've been very bad, but nobody got hurt, and just an old truck, but still, that foggy Wednesday morning, that tree come down right in front of me, and I couldn't stop. But if you would get somebody to look around at these trees, it's bad.
Yes, sir.
Couple seconds earlier, it could've been on the cab of the truck with us and killed both of us, but... Look at them. I have several of them that I see that are starting to come more and more and more, but...
Yes, sir. Anytime you guys bring specific trees to my attention, I try to make sure we get them looked at and assessed, and there's been plenty that we've had the roadside crew look at. Even if a tree's leaning, sometimes it's perfectly healthy and will live a long time, and there's other times we make the decision. I think, Mr. Matthews, one time we took down about like 17 that you brought to our attention, but so if there's specific ones or specific...
I'll go around and make a list up of what I think looks bad, bad, and I'll give you a call or email it to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
District Two?
Mr. Frederick, I had a call about 10 days ago, and I told him I'd mentioned it to me. I understand probably for a bridge crew, you would have to send that on to the bridge crew to have it recommend it. But on 623, which is Cello Road, when you shoot coming out of Scott's Bottom, shoot straight across 60 and take a right.
Okay, yes, sir.
Is a very small, narrow bridge in the bottom of Cello Road. I had a constituent call and tell me that he thought that the bridge was in bad shape. So I did, I travel that road frequently, taking my son back and forth to school. I pulled over and walked it and checked it. It is really choppy. I'm definitely not an engineer, I don't do any of that work for a living, but if it's any way possible, you could have somebody look at that at a bridge crew and see if we couldn't do something about doing some work on that bridge. It would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir. I'll send a note, and you're correct, the bridges are handled out of the Lynchburg District, but they're certainly within my area, and I can, I can shoot them a note.
Yes, sir. And I think that 1-800 number would take advantage.
Yeah, 1-800-367-Road is the best way to get something into the system where you can track it.
And would you state that for the taxpayers, so they could understand if they ever have a question, they could go, what, what is it, 1-800?
1-800-367-Road, I believe is the number to our...
Because they actually record that and put that into a...
Yeah, it opens up a work...
Where they have to have someone respond, right?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. All right, if you would refer that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. I think that's a timber deck bridge. A number of years back, I think it was redecked, but I, I'll get them, I'll send them a note.
Very narrow to start with, but I, I know, I'm sure that would take a lot of work to make it. Well, you almost, when you come in one way, you almost have to stop and let the truck come across it before you can come across.
Okay.
But I'd appreciate it if you'd have them look at it.
Got you.
Thank you.
District Three?
Yes, sir. Mr. Frederick, just wanted to commend you on the job that you did on Mill Road over there. It looks good to me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that. I rode it late last week, and it was looking good. I have to say, it was, I wish we could've shot the surface on it. When I looked at it, it was in great shape. There's a couple Leland Cypress trees that needed to be trimmed, that hang out over the new stone, and then a couple mailboxes still to address, but other than that, the road looked really well.
I think the majority of the constituents on that road are really pleased with it, and anyway, I think the state did a great job, so I appreciate it. And Mr. Pearson and his crew up there at Piercing's Instruction, I know they did a lot of the work, too, so...
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll pass your, your comment along, too.
And the work at the end of 608 and 636, right there, that y'all did last week, that was a really bad rut in the road on the low side of that highway, and you put some stones in there and covered all that. And I've seen several other transition areas in the, in my district that you've done that with, and it looks real good. I think it's probably gonna settle a little bit after this rain, so you might have to go back and check on some of those areas moving forward, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
District Four?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Frederick, two of the matters I emailed you previously about, one with regards to some of the local flooding along the main roadways, and the issue on Bridge Road as well, but on, I had someone communicate with me on Hall Road, there's some shoulder issues of the sides of the road being cracked up. I had someone mention again, if you're pulling out of Hall Road on 60, the visibility is still not good there. The unpaved portion of Banton Shop Road, which is in the new part of the Maysville District, needs some attention as well. And then at Enenville on Andersonville Road, that road is just so cracked up because of the, it, a lot of people have traveled that road daily, and that's where the S curve is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and it's like a tanker, two went down that I was upset previously. I know a tank didn't go down there, but, but the road is, has those crocodile cracks, I think you referred to them as.
Yeah, okay, alligator cracking.
Alligator cracking. Not crocodile. Two different...
Probably similar style.
And it's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Likewise.
District Five?
Brother Scott, Glenmore Road and Wellwater Road, that hole has appeared again. Getting kinda bad. Y'all filled it probably half a dozen times, but...
Right in that radius?
Right where it makes a turn, yeah.
Okay, yes, sir. We'll take another look at that.
Just needs to be filled again, I guess.
Yeah, Glenmore at Wellwater?
Yeah. Uh-huh. Thank you, too.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you, sir.
District Six, first of all, I wanna thank you for 659. You really riding it and made a big difference on that road.
Ransome Road.
Ransome Road, a whole lot safer. And then on 657, Spencer Road, after you crossed the bridge, that been washed out right there.
Okay.
It's, you know, how that come in, he had all that water come off that hill, and we had a lot of rain all the weekend, and it really took it out.
On the, on the shoulders, or...
Oh, in, in the middle of the road.
Okay.
Where that water come out through there, after you crossed the bridge on the north side, you said.
Okay.
And I, I forgot, left my notes at home. I got some, some place about Betty, I think it was Betty Branch Road, but I forgot you on that.
Okay. No problem, yeah. Give me a shout tomorrow.
District Seven?
Yes, sir. I had some complaints about, you go down right 20, Slate, Slate River Bridge, when you're coming back from Scottsville to Dylan. It's a terrible dip right there. A lot of people now getting complaining about that. It's a terrible bump. It's, road is smooth and everything, it just dips down.
Yes, sir. That's come up a lot over the years, and some settlement at that bridge, and but when I'm talking to the bridge office on Cello Road, I, I'll see if they have any plan to correct that approach on that.
It's like it would take a little bit of con, little, fill it, fill that hole in.
Yes, sir. I get what you're saying, but yeah, like I said, I'll talk to them.
But, but, you know, a lot of people complaining, but now that they both really lose their control of the vehicle.
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing it up again, and I, I'll, I'll talk to them. Hopefully, there's a way that we can smooth it out.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Thank you, boy.
Merry Christmas and a happy hangover.
Hey, move it down to public hearing. This is Emerson. Ms. Emerson, they was working on some site agreement. Did they get that straightened out? Can I call Mr. Wright a minute first before we start on this?
Sure, we can call Mr. Wright, Supervisor Chambers, or Mr. Carter.
Let's go down to the, to the second one, and then we'll come back to that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the second public hearing this evening is not, did we switch it?
I pre-...
Okay.
You gotta work there?
All right, the second public hearing tonight is regarding Central Division Services, Inc., and our fiber hut that they wanna propose at our Gravel Hill site. Tonight's public hearing is regarding to that, requesting at least space at our Gravel Hill Solid Waste Site to deserve, to serve the remaining riled project areas in the county. Since you were briefed last, with this last month, we received a more detailed drawing that shows how CVSI wants to bring in our current fencing, and where they want to place their equipment and the fiber hut. Also, CVSI is going to be using less space inside the site than was proposed last month. The attached drawing in your package shows the site alone with proposed changes that are highlighted in blue. So if you look at that drawing, you'll see that it's sort of like a panhandle, where they're showing the... All right, keep it on the screen for the rest of the audience, but you'll see a blue drawing showing how the fence, where it currently exists and where it's proposed to be. And it's a lot smaller than where we proposed it last month. So they've come back with more detailed drawings and you can see on that drawing that's not taking up that much space within the site. They're trying to stay away from those dominion trans, transmission lines that are overhead, so they figured this place, this spot within the site will give them access to their fiber hut. So they can put additional parking there for their vehicles that come once or twice a month. They'll get, have access to the site without having to go through our gated system. Kind of works out for them with the existing commercial entrance is already there. In your packet as well tonight, and also I gave it, put it in front of the station as a. The lease that should be titled Communication Site Lease Agreement that you have in front of you that has been viewed by our county attorney. If you approve this concept, you should also approve this lease agreement tonight. Or making the desire to change to that site to get their equipment in there to, uh, broadband for the people in the county.
Anybody sign up to speak in the public hearing?
No, sir.
So I guess we close the public hearing. What is the pledge of the board?
The, the building that's coming in, that's supposed to come in, I said, about thirty feet inside the fence. I was just thinking it'd be a whole lot simpler if it just went to the, all the way to the corner. To put it in instead of right at the front of it. They still could drive in, park right there. Whatever you think, but.
If Mr. Allen's, I'll get somebody to the back side of the.
I was talking with the side, close to the road, the highway. Well, either way, what, what, you know. I just didn't want them to take the fence out and come back thirty feet, which that's what I heard that we're going to.
And I talked with Central Virginia left regarding that and, uh, that before, the reason they chose that corner is because of the entrance, the commercial entrance is already there. So they wouldn't have to put in a new road. They can just use our entrance and come along the side and get to their equipment that way without having.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd offer a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve the lease agreement between Central Virginia Services Incorporated and Bucknam County. And authorize the chairman of the board, of the county, or the county administrator to execute and deliver the document on behalf of the board.
Do we get a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second that we approve this lease to Central Virginia. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes.
And a yes.
And seven, yes. Okay. All right, Ms. Emerson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next public hearing will be for case twenty-three S U P three thirty-one. Landowners are Ivan and Deborah Davis. The applicant is Buckingham Solar One LLC. This case was before you last month as an introduction. It is located on Tax Map one fifty-one parcel seventeen. This tax map has just over one hundred and sixty-six acres and it's located near one oh six Wetstone Lane, Dillon. And of course, the request is for the applicant to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and thirty-five year operation of a five megawatt AC photovoltaic community solar garden. The applicant is with us this evening to address any questions or concerns that you may have.
Anybody having a question? Mr. Davis, will you open the public hearing? He and I will say open the public hearing at this time. Anybody to sign up to speak?
No, sir. No one's.
Nobody to sign up to speak. What is the pledge of the board?
Chairman Chambers.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and pass this project tonight. Mr. Davis's project happens to be in my district. Was that the question and answer period that the developer, Mr. Davis, had early in the year and I saw no opposition to it? As a matter of fact, I thought it was a benefit to the county because it's one of the few projects that I saw that actually offered people to sign up and help possibly cut the electric bill as much as ten percent. So I'd like to make a motion tonight that we approve this project.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
If it motion, did you hit the button?
Yes, sir.
If it motion is second that we approve this project, are there any questions? Board members having a questions? All in favor of motion? Six, yes. All right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next case is twenty-three S U P three thirty-two. The landowner is Jesse Woodson Johnson and the applicant is CWJ Properties LLC. It's located at thirty-nine seventy-three Petersville Church Road, New Canton on State Route six thirteen. It is an A one zoning district. This case became before the board last month as an introduction as well. And the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to operate an adult home and assisted living facility. I believe Ms. Woodson Johnson is with us this evening as well. If there are any questions or concerns from the board.
I think it's a good project and I hope I'm successful and that's still no problem with it. And the board member having a question, Mr. Ms. Johnson.
You guys sign to speak?
And does anybody sign up to speak?
We have one.
One to sign up to speak?
Yes.
At this time, open the public hearing.
Donna McRae Jones, District two. Good evening. My name is Donna McRae Jones. I'm from District two. My address is eighteen oh six Coward Road, Cumberland, Virginia. I stand before to support Jesse and her family for opening her doors for our senior citizens, something that's very needed in the community. And to support them, I wanted to stand up before everyone and evoke my. Support for her, opening her heart, her doors and her family to support the seniors. As you know, right now in our society, our seniors are our most important assets. And if we don't take care of them, we have to look at the fact that who will be there to take care of us if we don't do something now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. At this time, we close the public hearing. What is the pledge of the board?
Make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Motion and second that we approve this request. All in favor? Seven, yes. Thank you, boy. Congratulations, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Johnson.
Emerson.
Yes, sir. The next case before you is an introduction of case twenty-three S U P three thirty-three. The landowner is Martin Slate River Farm LLC and the applicant is Verizon Wireless. And the agent for Verizon this evening is Stuart Squire. He is available virtually by Zoom should you have questions and concerns after this introduction. This is located on Tax Map sixty-five parcel sixteen. It's about sixty-four point eight acres and this is on Ransom Road in the Slate River Magisterial District. It is zone A one and the request before you is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing a one hundred ninety-nine foot monopole communications tower. And the applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. The conditions are attached. There are fifteen. This comes with a cityscape recommendation of approval. And their recommendations for conditions have been attached to this request as well. The planning commission sends this case to the Board of Supervisors with the unanimous recommendation of approval. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request? If so, January eighth, twenty twenty-four, six P M.
What is the pledge of the board?
I'll make a motion. Public hearing.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is second that we accept, I'll set a public hearing for the January eighth meeting. Six fifteen, that's good. All in favor? Seven, yes. Ms. Emerson.
And yes, sir. The last case I have before you this evening is an introduction of case twenty-three Z M A three thirty-five. This is a county property. Landowner, of course, is Buckingham County and the applicant is Buckingham County. This property is located as Tax Map one thirty-eight parcel fifteen. It's just over eight acres and it's located at or near two eighty-four Industrial Park Road, Dillon. This is the property known or referred to as the soccer fields. It's currently zoned neighborhood commercial. And the request, at the request of the board, is to rezone from neighborhood commercial to recreational access for conformity with county usage. I, as an agent for the county, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request if desirable. This case was introduced to the planning commission and the planning commission sends this case to the Board of Supervisors with unanimous recommendation of approval. Question or for a public hearing at the pleasure of the board would be January eighth, twenty twenty-four at six P M.
They moved.
If it motion.
Make a motion.
If it motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Miles, that we'll set a public hearing on January eighth, we say seven twenty, seven thirty, six thirty, I mean, six, huh?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay. All in favor? Seven, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's move on over to Department of Agents and reports of items of consideration. Number one, consider Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-four. What is the pledge of the board?
So move, Mr. Chairman, that the schedule be adopted for twenty-four.
Second.
If it motion is second, but the schedule for twenty twenty-four be adopted. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Two, consider this solo policy recommendation from the solo committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe there's been a few changes made to, uh, to update that policy tonight as we speak. Is that right, Mr. Carter?
These, these have your changes.
They have the new changes. Okay. All right. So I would make a motion to approve this recommendation.
Second it.
If it motion is second, that we approve the recommendation come from the solo policy. All in favor? Are there any questions? All in favor?
So everybody that we have to work on solar after this has to go by the policy, correct?
Starting in January, January first.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Doria? Starting January first, everybody go by the same? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. January first, as the committee said, everybody go by the same policy, okay?
We're hoping that the ones that we approved, Mr. Chairman, that will adhere to the policy, but that this starts January first.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Seven, yes. All right.
Chairman, that committee was, started to work with Mr. Doria and Jacob Carisella. They were great to work with. That committee, I think, was very productive. Mr. Matthews. And for that time, there's a lot of reading and we had to go through and come up with the policy, come back and get the system's input and other input and get them all into the policy. So pretty hefty policy, it's thirty-two pages, as you can see in your packet, so a lot that went into getting that.
All right. Thank you. And again, we commend the committee for doing a great job. We thank you that we got some teeth in place now to protect our county. Thank you. Item three, consider request from Piedmont Health District for care real worth the physical year twenty-three funds in amount of six thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll speak a little bit about that. So when you all do your annual appropriation to health department. Lucky for us, in the last few years, they haven't spent all their money. So they come out to the county and say they have, in this case, six thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars left over they haven't spent. They're making requests tonight to ask you guys, you know, can they use that money instead of sending a check back to the county to purchase, uh. I think they have some office equipment they want to purchase and some other items. So they're asking, can they just keep that funds? Have expenses to help their office out. Once again, we commend them for having money left over. They're not spending all, but they have money left over.
What is the pledge of the board?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Matthews, wait a minute, Matthews, got Matthews up here. That we will consider this request, approve this request. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Uh, the next on the agenda is to consider the purchase of a new solid waste truck to replace the one damaged. It was an accident on October the fourth. I think all the board members know about that. Motion by Supervisor Branca, we got a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gilliam that we would, uh, purchase this truck, uh, consider this, uh, item. Are there any questions on the motion?
What is the lead time on ordering a truck now?
This is going to be, I think, July or June before it comes in, so we got to work. I also want to point out that this will be done with federal funds, our grant, ARPA money, so.
Those are recommendations of the committee.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Seven, yes. Item five, consider finance, committee recommendation to purchase a new. V, particularly a new vehicle for the county for the purchase of the A R P A funds.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, just to stay on our normal rotation by purchasing one new vehicle a year for various departments. Just like the previous request, this will be done with our federal funds. We got into spend for. Our ARPA funds, so the committee recommendation, we purchase just a basic four at one fifty.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, that's no local money, right, Mr. Carter?
No, local, no tax bill funds, that's right.
Federal money?
Yes, sir.
No new spending, right?
I'll make a motion that we purchase.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Miles, that we just purchase this. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. All right. Uh, Mr. Wright, are you ready for the, uh? Signing agreement? Yes, sir. Oh, sir. All right. Okay. Let's back up to, um, L one. About to have a question for Mr. Wright.
On what, I'm sorry, Mr. L one. Okay. Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Wright to review the changes perhaps?
Yes, please.
If I could ask, or the applicant?
All right.
The changes, I want to point out, we had some nice comments over the weekend in regard to the, and some of those have been adopted, suggested by various parties. It always takes the outside party because lawyers never can, you know, language till, so when he showed up and sort of arbitrated and got the final little words worked out. And that's what you have in front of you. I'll let him talk about the signing agreement. He knows the changes and if you have any follow-up questions, we'll be happy.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Wright. I guess upon the sound of this agreement, would the county get a million dollars like this thing?
After the signing agreement is signed and sent to the company, the developer, within, uh.
Ten business days.
Ten business days, you should have a million dollars in your bank account.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
That's the first time that's happened history of this board with a project like this.
Okay.
That's a pretty big deal for the taxpayers. Hopefully, our taxes won't have to go up next year.
At this time, we open the public hearing. Did anybody sign?
Don't sign.
Well, uh. Sir.
Chairman, if you'd like the applicant to talk a little bit about the signing agreement and then we'll have a public hearing and any other review you want from that, we'll be happy to provide you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, appreciate the time today, uh, supervisors. So, so just at a high level. There was something said when we met with the, the planning commission that resonated with us. We had got a five to two approval vote. There was one individual voted no for the project that said, while he supports solar, was not against solar. He had never seen any benefit to the county. never seen any benefit to the county, Buckingham County, uh, for many solar projects that have been approved. Um, we took that to heart in our conversations with the county attorney. Um, I, I think we presented something that is substantially better than a lot of your, your neighboring counties, those that have entered into these agreements, um, with substantially front-loaded payments, um, that allow your constituents and your taxpayers to see benefit upfront from these projects, uh, whether or not we ultimately get to build it or not. Um, so, so, you know, with that in mind, we structured this agreement. Um, there's a couple components that we've, we've made changes on since, since you've seen the last draft. Um, most of those have been expansions to include, um, reimbursements for entities that may not be related to Buckingham County, uh, specifically for fire and EMS. Um, if you guys needed to call, you know, on another county, um, uh, to adhere to an event that may happen, um, we would reimburse that. Um, the, the, the basic structure of this agreement has, um, uh, two components, though, two major components from a financial perspective. Um, the first is a, a revenue share, um, which comes in the form of, of, you know, you can consider them kind of tax payments, um, you know, starting at, at roughly $1,540 a year per megawatt, um, increasing every five years, uh, throughout the life, the 35 years of the agreement. Um, the second is the accelerated payment. So you, you asked a question about the million dollars, yes, sir, that, that is a true number. Um, we, we structured it to where there's three accelerated payments in this agreement, totaling $3 million in whole. Um, the first one would be due upon approval of the signing agreement within 10 days. Uh, the second million dollars will be paid, uh, 30 days after notice to proceed, that would be essentially after the county issues us our building permit and we go to start construction. Um, the third million dollar payment, uh, would be paid, uh, 30 days after the commencement of operation of the plant. Outside of, of that, there's a, a couple other components that we added into this agreement, um, to try to address some sentiments of, of folks that may, may not necessarily be against solar, but may not be completely supportive of it. Um, there's additional insurance requirements in there, uh, there's decommissioning bonding requirements in there. I think we made some edits to, um, to the signing agreement to align with the, the S U P that was approved last month, um, that essentially removes the salvage value exclusion from there. Um, the, the, all in all, you know, we've tried to put forward an agreement that will be, you know, very favorable to, to the board of supervisors, but more importantly, your constituents.
All right, and the board room have a question for this chairman?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. So with regards to the, um, the revenue that we're getting from this, the amendments thereto to this signing agreement has not changed any, um, anything with the, um, various installments of 31 million, is that correct?
I can, I can address that if you'd like. Um, uh, no, I think the, the, if, if there was any changes, so the dollar numbers were never changed, um, throughout the course of this. I think the only, the only item that changed is actually to the benefit of the county, uh, which is, in the event that we terminate the project earlier, we would still owe the county the 35 years of payments. Um, so, so that is the one, I think, benefit, um, that was expanded on for the county.
If you don't want public comments, so the public will be aware, the changes that you have in front of you, the red line, what's in the red line indicates, uh, page one is the only thing on that, is just the date itself, uh, we added today's date to it. On page four, you know, the S U P, we put that that was adopted on November 14th of 2023. On page seven.
There was expansion of 4.1.
Which, uh, says for emergency responders, not only if Buckingham emergency responders had to come, and we call for other people by mutual aid, they'll be responsible for Cumberland, Prince Edward, whoever might have to come in, in that regard.
Page eight, 4.3, cost reimbursement.
Page eight, the cost to reimbursement, uh, they would, uh, pay us up to $250,000 for various fees that might be charged in assessing their plans to get, uh, items approved or otherwise.
Essentially his legal bills.
Yep. Well, maybe a little bit more than that. I, I don't plan on collecting all that, in my opinion, by column. Early decommissioning is, again, the guarantee, if, if the project goes away early, we still get the tax revenue for the 35 years. We had a little discussion about termination, that really what the, uh, file was, but, so that's just to clarify, what happens if this, when does this agreement end? If it ends in 35 years, that's fine. If it ends earlier, they still have to meet their financial obligations unless the county's bad about causing something. So those are basically the changes, and it can be extended by mutual agreement of the parties as provided in six two. But I think those are the changes, and, uh, as I say, they, uh, it tightens it up, we appreciate the published comments that people who communicated, but we have a stronger agreement than when we started the day.
Pretty hard work.
All right, any questions for him? No more questions? At this time, open the public hearing, anybody sign up to speak?
Stand up.
Here and then, okay. What is the pledge of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd offer a motion, I'm, I would actually move that the board of supervisors approve the signing agreement between Buckingham County and Blue Rock Solar LLC, and authorize the chairman of the board of supervisors or the county administrator to execute and deliver the document on behalf of the board of supervisors.
You got a second?
Second.
Like, thank staff for their hard work in this.
Motion and second. Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Matthews, that we approve this project. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes, all right. Now let's move back on to item six. Uh, consider the finance, uh, committee report, recommendation to the grant of a general corporate extension request in the amount of $12,098 as the county portion of paid increases. What is the pledge of the board?
Chairman, I'll speak a little bit about that before you vote. As you remember, this request came to you last month in the extension office, uh, they made a request during the November meeting for additional funding for the county's portion of their pay increases, and so you sent this request to the finance committee for their review. The finance committee is recommending granting the extension request for $12,098. Uh, the committee is also recommending using any of your balance from the general fund to cover this new appropriation. Uh, it felt that, you know, for that amount, it was a small amount, they got pay increases, so they needed extra funding to cover their employees, so, uh, the $12,000 was justified for those.
So what is the pledge of the board?
I'm making motion.
All right, can we get a second?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Allen, that we will, uh, consider this request, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Seven yes. Okay, item seven, consider finance committee recommendation regarding the school board request, we'll hand it handout at the meeting. Will the finance committee explain this to me? I don't understand.
Sure, I'd, if, if it's okay with, with you, Mr. Chairman, I defer to Mr. Carter.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, uh, you should have got a handout tonight from the finance committee. Uh, at the direction of the full board, finance committee examined the school board's requests from the November meeting. Finance committee's recommendations. The first recommendation was that the $125,000 has listed as local county appropriations to other state revenues. They are leaving the entry in the local section artificially placed local appropriations that will cause confusion next year, and this grant is no longer available. As long as the funds are in the state section, they will be approved throughout the quarterly budget adjustments made throughout the year by the school board. Number two, the finance committee is recommending giving the school board additional $110,000 in local appropriations to allow for the 2% pay increase to start in January 1st, 2024. The caveat is that any carryover funds for FY '22 in the amount of $744,000 approximately will remain with the county to offset the $600,000 given to the school board in the FY '24 budget in this new money request. Uh, the finance committee is also making note that any subsequent carryovers will be evaluated each year, so per year.
Um, sure, I'll just, if, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll add that we had a, we had a, um, we sent several questions over to the school division, um, that were answered, and, um, the finance committee met, we looked at the request, the original request, of course, um, was to approve the budget amendment with regards to, I think it was, uh, roughly 215, um, I'm sorry, $125,000 that was in the local, um, line item, but really, that was state grant, so we decided to move that up, of course, to state money, um, based on the response that we got from the school division. Um, of course, the second one, the second request, that is, was to, if we're just all on the same page, was to approve, I think it was 2% retroactive, uh, to July 1st, or 2% starting, um, January the 1st, um, based on what the state has given out, and that price tag was north of $300,000 for the retroactive. And so the finance committee chose to go with the, uh, beginning January the 1st, which is what the state's doing, is my understanding. Um, if I'm wrong, correct me. So that, that is equ, equates to roughly $110,000, uh, for the 2%. Um, and of course, the caveat is that any carryover funds from the school budget fiscal year '22, um, would remain, that those funds would remain with the county to offset the $600,000 that we allocated in the spring when we were building our fiscal year '23, '24 budget. That's essential, what Mr. Carter said, I don't know if Supervisor Matthews had anything to add.
Now, I was just asking, I was here last month, y'all met with the school board on this, y'all had a meeting together, what you seen?
We did not, we did not meet with the school board, we sent over, I think it was 15 questions or so, and, and, and then, based on those responses, a lot of it had to do with end-of-year money, I'll just say that, with regards to the, I think the, we asked for the last five fiscal year end-of-year balances, I think the smallest end-of-year balance was, what was that, Mr. Carter? Five?
497.
Right, 497, $500,000. So there is money in the finance committee's estimation to use to fund the request. I know there's been a lot of talk about end-of-year money as well, and I'm a huge proponent of the public schools, I'm a product of public schools, but we had to dip $600,000 into our own reserves in the spring to offset what the school, what schools needed, and I'm happily voted for, but, but, but for the future boards, that's a reoccurring cost, and so is this $110,000.
Another thing, Mr. Miles, with the recommendation of the county's administrator, we did not have the money to give, I mean, that's the other thing, unless you wanted to go into reserves again
Right.
to fund that, so, and that, we didn't feel like that was treating the taxpayers right.
Next year's, next spring is gonna be hard enough. So I'd offer a motion that the book-
And the board room have another question?
Sorry.
And the board room have a question?
I'd move the-
I understand that, that this funds right here, that the, uh, doesn't include the, um, part-time bus drivers too? That what I was hearing? Disco, they could get a part of this too? That what you was, or they not?
I was told they were.
I was told they were, I thought they-
Substitutes, right, Mr. Chairman?
Substitute bus drivers.
Now, Mr. Chairman, the contracted bus drivers were left out, though, correct?
Actually, how many substitute bus drivers, Mr. Kittle, do you know that you have, or would Mr. Palmer be able to answer that question about it?
Gotcha. Chambers, I don't know about you, but I like to see in this funding that we gave them, if they could see a way to try to help them compensate, because I think we, as a board, did a lot, but on the, the regular ones, I don't know how you feel about that, or how the board feels, but.
Well, my thing is, if they're driving every day, why are they not getting what the contracted bus drivers are getting if they happen to drive every day?
My feeling is that if they substituted, they're doing the same job that all the drivers are doing.
And I've been getting a few emails about it, that they're driving every day and they're not getting paid it, so.
I recommend that you, that you pay them that what the regular drivers are getting.
That's what I'm saying, can we take a minute?
How much more would you have to add to pay for the substitute?
Wait a minute, I was understanding that the, uh, this was, the, uh, part-time bus driver substitute was included in this. Don't you understood, Cameron?
That was not-
That's what I understood.
Well, we don't determine that, the board doesn't determine that, that, that money is-
I'm talking, well, you ain't turn the money, Lucius, you, you, you know.
So what I'd say, Mr. Chairman, is that the finance committee responded to a request from the school division, and that was not included, I mean, I, that was not included according to the school staff. They didn't ask for that.
I think what Chairman, uh, Chambers was trying to say is, we could make that a stipulation, is that not right?
Right, that's-
Miles, is that what you were stating?
Yeah.
Well, that wasn't studied by the finance committee, and I'm not saying the finance committee has to study it, but, uh, where is the money gonna come from, is my question, would it come from end-of-year balance?
Other than money, he was trying to talk out of, out of this money.
Right.
Out of this money, George, the 125. I think that's-
The 125, the 125 does not include the, the, the part, I'm sorry, the substitute school bus drivers, correct? So that number, we would need to, if you all want to do that, we need to in, increase that number by, I don't know how much.
Don't think that's what Chairman, I let Chairman Chambers think for himself, but I don't think that's what he meant. I thought he meant that it, that would be included in this 125, Mr. Miles. But I, I may misunderstood, Chairman.
Dr. Kittle, could you come up here?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, take your time.
I think we need to do right by the substitute driver.
Yeah, I understand, but-
I agree with you. I'm with you 100%.
So this 125, who is this, what is this covering, other than, is that 2% just for who and not, we just want to try to get
I know.
a grip here of what's going on.
The 125, uh, let's, let me back up just a little bit, maybe it'll help clear things. Uh, we got locked into a 5% pay raise. On, you probably know a lot about it, when the governor, uh, when we could not get a budget, and it, and then it led to a House Bill 1610, I think it is, on February 24th, and we went ahead and abated by it. Before that, we were looking at, everybody was talking about 7%. The second year of the buy-in, um, that was in, and of course, the House and the Senate both said, but then we could not get a, we could not get a budget until September. And then in September, uh, we, we needed to get, take that 5% that we had, to, and to get it to 7%, we needed to do the $125,000. And that's from January, January to June 30. I hope that makes it a little bit louder.
To meet what the governor's requiring.
Yeah.
To meet what the governor's requiring.
I've been doing budgets, this is my 14th, Beckenburg, Buena Vista, I never had a budget like this, where you're, you're actually, we're dealing with 23, 24, uh, and in a minute, I'm going to be doing 24, 25. So it, it's, it's very confusing, the governor's gonna get his buy-in budget out here in about a week or so. So we, we just want to get where we get to 7% for the rest of this contract. Uh, we, we appreciate what you did for our bus drivers, that made them competitive, but we did not feel, I mean, so, you know, that was a, a huge raise. So that's why we did not include them on the $125,000, this is to get our staff. Somebody asked a question about SOQs, how much do we get with that? That's a, one of the biggest misconceptions there is. I'll show you- I'll show you, I'll give you an example. On standards of quality, we have five, we have five assistant principals in, in the division, two at the high school, two at the complex, and one at middle school. We don't get a dime for that. And we have to make that up. So when you, when you count up their salaries and stuff, it's about four hundred fifty, probably, four, close to five hundred thousand dollars in benefits. So that's why every year you hear talk about, let's, let's get more of the SOQs paid for. We get an allotment for teachers, uh, we get some for CTE, but not what you think. That's why we, we hustle to try to get grants, you know, pay for something, like that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars you saw. That, that was a grant for, to try to get a lift in the auto thing. And sometimes they'll do stuff like, they'll send it to you on June thirtieth, knowing that you don't have time to, then we gotta, is, you gotta get with Carl, say, Carl, you know, we're gonna have to have that money back, because it goes after June thirtieth, it goes to you guys. And so it has a switch and that kind of stuff. I would be very grateful if we could just make sure we take care of our people, because I don't, I don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring. I, I lived through eight years of zero raises, one percent and two percent in Buena Vista. And honestly, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure that some of these times are coming back. We'll know that in a little bit, but I'd like to take care of our people. This really, I think, is fair. Appreciate it if you consider it.
Does anybody have any idea how much more it would be to take care of the substitute bus drivers? Anybody know?
It was given earlier as to how much it would be to take care of the substitute bus drivers, correct?
Yes, you have the information.
But y'all did not give to us.
All right, Mr. Chairman, perhaps we send this back to finance?
Huh?
Perhaps we send this back to the finance committee to look at the substitute bus drivers.
I'm not gonna vote for it tonight, I'm, the rest of them do the honor. If you don't include the substitute bus drivers, I'm not gonna vote for it, that's the way it is. That was misled. What, what we, Cameron?
That was my understanding.
You all were told one thing, and it wasn't safe.
It wasn't, I'm not gonna vote for that.
I have a hard time giving somebody a seven percent raise when the ones that are making the least amount of money of all of them don't get nothing.
I'm not gonna say that.
I have a hard time.
I think it.
I think we need to send it back.
Send it back.
And we can take care of it in January's meeting. And, but I would like to see us take care of it. If they're driving every day, they need to get paid.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And I'd be glad to introduce myself, and I'm serving as chair. Since there are these, these questions coming up with the finances, I think it would be very helpful to have us sit down and talk with you all and make sure these misconceptions haven't just happened tonight.
Well, the only problem I got, the finance, the ones on the finance committee could be off end of the year, so we need to do it before the end of the year. Right? You know, I'm not trying to be smart.
No, I'm not, no, I'm, I'm a better one.
The two, the two men, the two board members that served on the finance committee, this their last meeting for the year twenty-twenty-three, so we have to do something now before the end of the year.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could we, could the finance committee quickly get together, send word to Mr. Carter, to all the board members, and agree that way? I don't see how that could be.
I don't see how that could be. We got to vote on it.
I know, I know, I just.
I have the figures, Joe, I don't. Palmer, have some kind of idea what it, Mr. Palmer, would you, there are five drivers, if we was to bring them up to a reasonable rate, what kind of money are we looking at ballpark?
It was actually more than that, Mr. Palmer, when you start looking at that, correct? Seems like you really up on that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
And don't hit me with your gavel.
I'm not gonna hit you.
Could, could the finance committee meet and have a January recommendation and meet with the schools to get this straight?
Meet in the January meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I got no problem with that.
Is that okay with you all? Finance committee meet, and then in January, when you meet, you'll have a recommendation?
Yeah, okay.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I got no problem with that.
Are you, y'all okay with that? Gentlemen, Dan, you okay with that?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just calculate, I.
So what do they, what do they, how many days of school do you have? Hundred and eighty?
Same thing, mate, they're doing the same.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So a hundred and eighty times five is nine hundred, then nine hundred times forty, that gives you thirty-six thousand dollars.
What you get then?
Thirty-six thousand. What I'm thinking, right, I might not be hitting it right, but I.
Is that okay, Jeff?
Said a hundred and eighty days, with five men.
They didn't treat it fair.
Five, I can say five men, five substitutes.
But you know what?
Nine hundred and nine hundred times forty dollars a day.
I was for that, too. You know, some of the.
Cameron here, Mr. Seck, I asked her. I ain't voting for it tonight.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this and send it back to finance with regard to the substitute bus drivers, and at the January meeting, you all will have a recommendation.
Okay. The motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Brent, that we'll send this back to the finance committee. I think that's the way to say it. All in favor? Seven yes, thank you. Item eight, consider requests of C M H Homes Incorporated for a refund of a building made due to customers canceling their order for their home in an amount of four hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. What is the board's pledge?
So moved. So moved.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Matthews, second by Supervisor Allen, that we would consider this request. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. Item nine, consider the minimum understanding of MOU for the EMS and Avonia Fire Station. Minimum random for the understanding of the MOUS, MOU for the EMS and Avonia Fire Station.
I make a motion.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, get a second?
Sorry.
Second by Supervisor Allen, that we would consider this request. All in favor? Seven yes. Okay. Q, I mean O.
Skip the.
What, what do I do with this? Oh, the personnel committee report under Shepherd's sheet, y'all see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Everybody agree with that?
Twenty-nine.
Agree with that? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr., I mean Supervisor Brent?
Yeah.
Your district, Representative term expires January twenty-fourth, like me doing a great job on the planning commission, you could put him back on there?
Yeah, I, we're gonna reappoint the.
All right.
Mr. Doherty.
Put that to motion.
Make a motion for that, yes.
Get a second?
Second.
The motion by Supervisor Brent, second by Supervisor Davis, that we appoint Mr. Doherty back on the planning commission for another term of four years. Any questions? All in favor?
Thank you, Steve, for, good job, well done.
All right. Kenny, attorney matters.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
I have no evidence tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Sounds like she didn't want to hear about you.
Who was that lady that just left yesterday? Goodbye, I didn't see her, y'all see her?
Her name is Zoom.
Oh, Zoom, oh, okay.
And she just left.
Ken Administrator's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In your packet tonight, also, you will have your battle laws for the upcoming year. We usually put those in the packet in December, so that you can be looking for January, and you adopt them. So if there any changes you wanna make to those battle laws, let us know, so we can discuss. I think the two major changes in the battle laws this year were the creation of the vice chairman for the planning commission, and then also, we put in there the policy on one of the vacancy. Also, in your packet, there is a Virginia Certified County Supervisors Program, which will make you aware that, you know, a lot of you went to these new supervisors seminars in January, each, each time we had new board members. They changed that a little bit, and now it's more of like a certified, certification process. It used to be a one-day thing in Richmond, and we'd go down there, and we'd stay for one day, and we'd come back, and they would have seminars to teach all the new board members on what's expected of them. In your packet tonight, they're now, have split that into three modules. The first one is in January and March, and that's talking about budgeting. The second module's in May third and June twenty-eighth, and that's dealing with planning and land use. And then the third module is to be determined, but they'll be dealing with leadership. So if you want to attend those sessions and those, get certified, please let us know, and we'll get you ready and set up for that.
Thank you, sir. All the board matters?
I've got two things, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The first is, I was just chatting with Supervisor Allen, who's on the planning commission. There was a lot of discussion at the past planning commission meeting about the county not having a solar policy. They've, and I'll ask Supervisor Allen if he has any input in this, but several meetings back, the planning commission approved a solar facility, whether you like it or not, that's one thing. We didn't have a policy then. There's now one that's being hung up in the planning commission, because I guess people don't like it, I, I don't know. But now that we have a policy, and though it is effective January the one of twenty-twenty-four, what I would like to offer is this, a motion that the board of supervisors communicate through a letter from our county administrator to the planning commission that, first of all, the board of supervisors approves its hard work, because they meet twice a month, and it's a lot. I generally watch those meetings. And then, secondly, that solar application should be evaluated as followed by the planning commission, A, for applications that are actively being considered, or like the one that's being held up, they be, they be evaluated in light of the policy that existed at the time of that application, which, of course, on January the first, that's when the solar policy takes place. And they've got a meeting coming up, is what Supervisor Allen was telling me. And that any new application and inactive application, the new applications be evaluated in light of the policy in effect at the time of the filing, and for inactive applications, they be evaluated in light of the policy that existed when the application becomes active again. Just to clarify, because that's just my opinion on that.
Yeah.
As Supervisor Allen, so I'd make that motion.
We'll have it on the eighteenth, and have another public hearing on it. Actually, if you're saying it's, it doesn't become true until January the first.
Right.
And we pass it as we have it.
Right.
Then when it comes to the board of supervisors, we'll have to go by the policy that we just created, because it'll be after January.
I think what the solar committee wanted was that it had to be starting the process of, your, if that process or that application's active, it's already before the January first.
Why you just said it won't, it won't true until January the first?
It said for all inactive and suspended applications. Last line, if you have an active application that's already going through Nikki, it's gonna follow the old.
We gotta have another public hearing on the eighteenth.
Right.
For this next solar power.
So they're already active, they don't have to go by the twenty-twenty-four.
But the, yeah, okay. The only thing I was saying is, it was said here when we made the motion, that it won't true until January the first, the policy. So now, I'm just saying, I just wanna make sure what you were saying, so, in other words, on the eighteenth, we, we use it. Okay?
You use the current policy.
Right.
Current policy, all right. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Could we vote on the motion, if that's okay? Can we vote on the motion, Mr. Chairman?
What is your motion?
Just to clarify again, that, A, the board of supervisors appreciates the planning commission's hard work, and solar applications be evaluated, for applications that are actively being considered, they be evaluated in light of the policy that existed at the time of the application, just because it does start January the first of twenty-four. And that for new applications and inactive applications, the new applications be evaluated in light of the policy in effect at the time of the filing. And for inactive applications, we have one, a rather large one, they be evaluated by the planning commission in light of the policy that existed when the application becomes active again, when it, when it wakes up, if that's what.
Okay. So we have to contact the solar panels now, and let them know what's gonna happen on the eighteenth.
I don't know, y'all like hearing me talk so much. What I'm clarifying is that the planning commission at the last meeting was concerned about the moving it forward, and Supervisor voted no on that, on, on, on holding it up, because they said you don't have a solar policy. That's our job to adopt policy, this whole board of supervisors, not the planning commissions. So they wanted a policy, well, they've got an application that is active, that's gonna be considered this month on the eighteenth. Policy doesn't take effect until January the first, so, so in the conditions, which, by the way, all those conditions are included into what's in the solar policy, just.
Currently.
Right, currently, currently. So just reminding the planning commission that, under the auspices of how they operate, the solar policy doesn't take effect until January the first. Everything behind that, you've gotta use your conditions to do that with. That's all it is. As, I guess what I'm saying is, is that because the, because the solar position, I'm, I'm sorry, because the solar policy doesn't start until January one of twenty-four, shouldn't stall that application up anymore. That's essentially what I'm saying.
So basically, what I, what I'm understanding is, to a certain extent, this one that's already made in the process, its grandfather then has nothing to do with the new policy, correct?
Right.
Whether you vote for that or whether you vote against it, basically, its grandfather then has nothing to do with the policy that was put up. Is that right?
Perfect.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Gilliam, I don't have any more questions? I think we had enough questions already. All in favor?
And then one last thing, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's my last meeting, and it really has been a joy to serve with the, with the six people up here, to hear from the public, even though we haven't agreed on everything. We have agreed on a lot, we've gotten a lot done, we've connected more people to the internet, we've invested in small businesses. This board has done a lot, a lot, for the county, namely, public schools, which I'm a proud supporter of. I, the main group of people I'd like to think are the employees, because really, if it wasn't for Mr. Carter and his team, they're, they're what, the staff is what makes the government operate. It's, it's not just the six or seven of us, if we make policy, so I return to the friendships I've made, some I forged, which I never thought that I would be able to, never. And, and I've been able to do that, and I thank Rachel, my biggest supporter, thank you. And we've been through a lot of ups and downs, and y'all have been right here with me, and Supervisor Matthews is flying the coop as well. So I do wish you all much success in the future, and along with the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Yes, sir, Mr. Matthews.
I want to ditto what Mr. Miles just said. He's been a good Board of Supervisor member, along with the other six members of this organization or governing body. Each and every one of you, I'd like to call you a friend, and we may not always agree on some things, but we were able to work things out and do what was best for the county in the long run. So we got a lot of things accomplished in the last eight years since I've been on the board, and I've been on the board with Mr. Allen, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Chambers, and myself, we're all there, those all eight years. And the other two, Mr. Gillum and Mr. Davis, and of course, Mr. Miles, the last four years. But you guys bring a different perspective to the board, and I do appreciate that. First thing I'd like to say is, over the last eight years, we've got a lot accomplished. Number one, upgrading our solid waste sites, which I think is a huge plus for our county, keeping trash that didn't exist in Buckingham County out of our county. And that's been a money saver and a one-time item on our budget. Renovation of the Deelman Primary Site, which was, which is now our public library and our community center, which is, I think, one of the top pieces to the puzzle here in Buckingham County. It's a beautiful place, it has the best location in the county, and of course, we saved about three or four million dollars by renovating that old school building, instead of building it from the ground up. The third thing is Wi-Fi accessibility. We deal with three different providers in the county of Buckingham, and a lot of people said this would never be done, never be done. And we were going house to house and business to business, and then before it's all over with, the entire county's going to have Wi-Fi service. And we were all a part of that, and I think that's a big thing moving forward. Number four, the startup of our great EMS department, you know, that's working from the ground up, and Mr. Allen was a big component of that, because he served on the EMS committee along with myself. Number five, in 2021, we reduced our tax rate from 55 to 52 cents, and it lasted for two years. We saved the county, or the taxpayers, $870,000 over two years. I can't be any prouder than that. We did that during the time of a pandemic, and I don't know of any other locality in the country that was able to do that. And that speaks volumes for our staff and for this board, to be able to get something like that done. Also, during that period of time, there was $200,000 worth of grant money that was given to local businesses to help keep their doors open. If that doesn't say a lot for this board, then nothing does. Also, working with the School Division, we did a lot of good things with their end-of-year money. We asked them about six or eight years ago to come up with different capital projects that they wanted to get done, and we put it in a line item, and we saved it for a period of time. And at the end of the day, we got a new roof on the high school this year, had installation of several different HVAC systems for our school system, and that's just to name a few. We've done our job as far as the Board of Supervisors, and I appreciate the confidence that the people in District 3 had in me, and also the people on this board. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. I'm sorry.
I wouldn't wear that one too lightly.
Miss Rachel, when you get to heaven, Saint Peter will give you automatically free passes. You're going to serve your time in hell full with George Miles. We need to go into executive session. George, my friend.
Likewise.
George, we need to go into executive session.
Okay.
Who are you?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into executive closed session with regards to discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments. That is the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711a.1, sir. Thanks, Danny.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Miles and second by Supervisor Matthews to go into executive session in the code that was stated. Are there any questions? All in favor? Thank you, seven votes.